All right. All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:01. Thank you all for being here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I, of the United States of America, in the true republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the vision of the Lord, and justice for all.
All right, let the record reflect, all council members are present. There's nothing to report out on our closed session. Any conflict of interest declarations from anyone? Seeing none, any changes or deletions to the agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into public comments. Any person wishing to speak in person on an item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Is there anyone that'd like to make a public comment on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none? We'll move into proclamations. National Health Center Week.
Thank you, Mayor. Like to, along with the City of Cloverdale, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale proclaiming August 3rd through 9th, 2025, as National Healthcare Center Week. Whereas, for 60 years, community health centers have delivered high-quality, affordable primary and preventive care to medically underserved communities, profoundly impacting America's healthcare system. As the nation's largest primary care network, they serve over 32.5 million Americans in more than 16,000 communities, providing a healthcare home to one in 10 people in the United States. Whereas, community health centers are vital to rural, suburban, and urban areas, often serving as the only accessible source of care. They address chronic disease, expand access to primary care, and integrate services such as dental and behavioral health, and their patient majority boards ensure care is responsive to community needs. Whereas, community health centers are economic engines generating $118 billion in activity and supporting over 650,000 jobs nationwide. They break down barriers to care, improve health outcomes, and reduce costs. Whereas, community health centers are on the front lines of public health, supporting veterans, addressing the opioid crisis, and responding to public health threats. Whereas, during National Health Center Week, we honor the dedicated staff, many are here tonight, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first health centers opened their doors 60 years ago. Whereas, as a geographically isolated community at the northern edge of Sonoma County, Cloverdale depends heavily on local providers. Whereas, Alexander Valley Healthcare serves as Cloverdale's primary health center, offering critical care to local residents and has become a trusted partner in advancing community wellness and equitable access to health services in northern Sonoma County. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that Todd Landz, Mayor of the City of Cloverdale, does hereby recognize on behalf of this Cloverdale City Council, August 3rd through 9th, 2025, as National Health Center Week in Cloverdale, and encourage all to participate this month by visiting Alexander Valley Healthcare and celebrating this vital partnership between America's community healthcare centers and the communities they serve. It's dated August 13th, 2025, so ordered, Todd Landz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Verlaski. Tonight, in the audience, I see lots of board members and people from Alexander Valley Healthcare. Debbie, would you like to say something, or anyone?
Good evening, Major Todd Landz and City Council members of Cloverdale. My name is Ricardo Adam, and I'm honored to speak today as Civic Engagement Project Manager at Aliados Health, and as someone whose life was changed by a community health center. My organization, Aliados Health, is formed by a network of 17 health centers spread throughout Sonoma, Marin, Yolo, Solano, Napa, and Contra Costa. We serve community health centers in the areas of health informatics, peer networks, policy advocacy, and community outreach. Last week, we celebrated National Health Center Week, marking 60 years of a movement rooted in equity, access, and compassion. These centers are more than clinics. They are lifelines for our most vulnerable neighbors. I speak for experience. I fled Venezuela in 2016, escaping political and social turmoil. Arriving in Sonoma County, I felt uprooted, like a plant torn from its soil. I was carrying trauma, uncertainty, and fear. But a community health center in Runner Park welcomed me, not just with medical care, but with dignity and kindness. That moment began my healing. It reminded me I wasn't alone. That's the power, yeah, and since then, I've worked with nonprofits supporting day laborers and wildfire survivors. And today, at Aliados Health, I have the privilege of giving back to the very health center that once gave me hope. That is the power of community health centers. They don't just treat illnesses, they restore humanity. Alexander Valley Healthcare has made a significant and positive impact on the Cloverdale community through its commitment to expanding access to comprehensive, compassionate, and culturally responsive care. And we couldn't be prouder of having Alexander Valley Healthcare CEO Debbie Powell receive the City of Cloverdale's National Health Center Week proclamation, and thank her and all of her incredible staff to the excellent work they perform from their hearts in attending Cloverdale's most vulnerable population. So, thank you very much, City Council members, and thank you.
I'm Debbie Howell, CEO of Alexander Valley Healthcare. I want to say thank you to Mayor Landz and the City Council for this recognition, and on behalf of all of the incredible staff at AVH and our amazing volunteer board members, we thank you for this recognition and want to let you know that it is an honor and a privilege to serve this community. Thank you.
Counsel, any comments?
Just like to thank you all, I know how hard you work personally. You really take it personal to fight, to make sure that all of our residents do receive care, and truly understand that when all people are cared for, it really does help the whole system at large, and I really appreciate all the personal work you do. Thank you.
It's a privilege. It's, you said, thanks, thanks to the council for recognizing this. I think it's a privilege for us to recognize it. You guys do a lot for the community, you've helped this community, you're a staple in this community, so, thank you, you know, keep doing what you're doing, and a lot of most, you know, a lot of folks in Cloverdale benefiting from you being there, so, once again, thank you, I appreciate it.
I couldn't have said it better, and I thank you for what you said. This is an absolute necessity when you get out to places like Cloverdale. We've been left off maps, we don't have the bus systems like we need, we don't have senior assistance like we need. This is absolute necessity, and every single person that's said something so far has said the right word, "community." It's not based on just your, you know, your seniors, your vets, your immigrants, this is everyone, and you guys welcome everyone, and you will continue to do so, and we are so lucky to have you, and I don't think that this council or this city can support you any more than we are because we are 100% on your side. I look forward to working together as partners like we have, and for the new future build, and cannot wait to make this happen, so thank you for everything. Do you guys mind if we have a picture? Perfect.
Are you ones in the front, over here?
You're gonna be in the back again.
It's the, they do this every year for some reason. Have you ever seen it? I just uploaded it in chat, of course, and said, "What questions would you ask?" I'm not gonna ask them, but... They do this every year to just show us. $127 billion worth of assessed property in Cloverdale.
Are you sure you don't want to stay?
I do, I was there.
All right, we will move into Presentations, E1, 25-26 Assessment Role. Kevin, or do we want to just move right into Diva?
Jump right in.
All right, are we, oh, perfect. All right, so I'm Diva Marie Proto, I'm the Sonoma County Clerk Recorder Assessor, so thank you for having me. We just wanted to offer to come to the cities, give a brief presentation about the assessment role, and then see if you had any questions for us about the assessment process or about the values. I will say that I'm not the tax collector, so I won't be able to answer any questions about the tax bill specifically, but, so our annual assessment numbers on the next slide. There we go. So we had over $127 billion this year in total assessed value for the entire county. Most of this is secured value, so that is the land, the structures that are tied to the land, and then unsecured values are a much smaller portion of that, so that might be boats, aircraft, property that is leased, that is, the owner is not necessarily the owner of the fee parcel underneath it. It was a 5.44 increase, percent increase from last year, and most of that was in the secured value, we had a very small increase in the unsecured value. The incorporated area saw a little bit less of an increase than the unincorporated area, so 5.92% for the unincorporated areas. Then on the next slide, just giving you some information about the timeline, so all of the values on this year's role are based on the date of January 1st of 2025. So it's the market value as of that date, or the Proposition 13 value. So our role is based on January 1st, it closes on June 30th, which is when we transmit all the values over to the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector. They're the ones that take the assessed values that we provide, they determine what tax rate areas it has, therefore, what is the actual taxable amount that is going to be billed to the customer, they put direct charges on it, and then they're the ones that send out the bills and then get the tax revenue as well. So the first installment will be going, is technically due November 1st, but everybody always remembers the December 10th date, as well as the April 10th date, which is when the installments become delinquent. So that means that the tax bill next spring is based on a value that was almost a year and a half in the past, January 1, 2025, so. And then we also process what we call role corrections and supplemental assessments, and that is when there's been a change of ownership that has happened some other date other than January 1st, or new construction completion, and those are ongoing, so people will get tax bills based on those values at any point in the year. So this is our assessment role history, again, this is for the entire county, over the last 15 years or so, so as you can see, we did have a couple of little dips. Again, the property taxes are based on prior years, so the values really saw the decline in a little bit later than the recession is really thought about, so. But we have been steadily climbing since then, so this is our largest role yet. The next slide shows very similar, just what our role growth history was, so we did have a couple years of negative role growth coming out of the recession, and then it's been fairly up and down, there hasn't really been a consistent percentage increase. We are working right now through some backlogs, so other counties may be seeing a little bit less of a assessment role increase than we are because we are still working on some things in the past. Our next slide, the city assessment role growth, so Cloverdale did have the lowest assessment role growth amongst the cities. It's not necessarily a bad thing, that this may just mean that you had less new construction, less property transfers where it's been assessed at a higher rate. So Sebastopol was our highest, and again, the unincorporated was also pretty high, but of those, Cloverdale was about 3.59%. And then the next slide has a lot of numbers on it, but it is the comparison of the 24-25 role year to the 25-26 year, unsecured, secured, and totals. So again, the land is going to be the land, the improvements will be the buildings that are there, personal property might be business property, so if somebody owns a business, those assets are taxable, and then exemptions are, and then personal property would also include boats, aircraft, those types of things. Exemptions are the homeowner's exemption, welfare exemption, low-income housing, disabled veterans exemptions that are available by state law for people to claim. So we did have a high, higher jump in exemptions for Cloverdale than we have in some of the other cities. And then just talking a little bit about what leads to those growth factors, so Proposition 13 is really the driving force in property taxes, so that means that if you own a piece of property for a long period of time, it's only going to go up a maximum of 2% each year, or the CPI, whichever is less. If that property transfers, or if there's new construction, you build an ADU, a kitchen, something like that, we'll reassess the property on the date of transfer as of the market value of that date. If there's new construction, it would be the value of the new construction only as of that date, so we don't reassess the entire property, it's only the additional part that you put on. So most of the time, that would be sales price, but that's not necessarily the case. If there's off-market transactions, somebody got a good deal from a family member, we are going to enroll the market value as opposed to the sales price. As I mentioned, we do have a backlog, it's really been there since the 2017 fires because all of those fire properties have to be assessed annually, so that added to our workload, but we are working on getting that down, so we're making significant strides in those, in that backlog right now. And then Proposition 19, we just like to make sure people are aware of it, it is affecting the property values, and it is affecting transfers, especially between family members. So Proposition 19 was passed in the November 2020 election by the voters, so unfortunately, we don't have any type of wiggle room in terms of how it's interpreted, it is state law, and there is a couple major provisions, one is that people can transfer their tax base now anywhere in the state, up to three times, so that means if somebody from San Francisco is moving into Sonoma County, they've owned their property there for 40 years, they have a very, very low tax base, they purchase a property up in Cloverdale, they would not be reassessed at market value, we would be transferring, if they apply and they qualify, we would be transferring that low property tax base up to Cloverdale, so that would be the enrolled value. On the flip side, people are also moving out of Sonoma County, maybe to the foothills or something like that, so they're taking their tax base, moving elsewhere, and then that property is sold and reassessed at market value. The big one that we've seen causing issues is the intergenerational transfer, so it used to be with parent and child transfers, mom could transfer the property to the child, and they could keep the property tax base. Now, that property must be the principal place of residence of the parent, and it must become the principal place of residence of the child. So if it doesn't meet those qual, within a year, and it needs to stay the principal residence, if it doesn't meet those qualifications, then we do need to reassess it at market value. So this is causing issues for some families, there is a family farm exemption, but the value of that exemption is fairly low, when you look at some of the family farms we have around here, the value of our property is, there's a million, million-dollar exemption on those transfers, and as you guys know, it's very difficult these days to find any type of large property that would be under a million dollars, so. We are seeing people having issues with the Prop 19 transfers, but we have not had enough data at the state level yet to really determine if it is a positive or negative for our county in terms of assessment value. And then, here is our contact information, if you have anything going forward, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Great, thank you, Diva. Any questions?
When you reassess, you say new construction, what, how does, how does ADUs fall into that category?
It would be the market value of an ADU at that date and time, so not necessarily the costs of construction, we would look at multiple factors, including the cost of construction, but it would be the market cost of construction, so if somebody's building it in their own backyard, they're a contractor, they can do all the work themselves, that's not going to necessarily be the market value of the cost. And then we'll also look at sales comparable, so if there's two houses and they're very, very comparable, except for one has an ADU on the property, what is the value of that ADU when you look at the sales prices? So we use multiple methods in terms of valuation.
Thank you.
Great, I'll open up to the public, anyone in the audience have any questions? Most of you probably know all of this, so, thank you so much for being here, really appreciate this, this is perfect, and we'll see you next year.
All right, thank you, have a wonderful day.
Okay, we'll move into F, Consent Calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. I'm going to pull F2. Anyone else have anything to pull? Seeing none, anyone have a motion? And that's, approve 1, 3, and 4?
And I second that motion.
Perfect, we have a first and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0, we'll move into F2. F2 is Consider a Resolution Approving Amendment to At-Will Employment Agreement for the City Manager Kevin Thompson to Provide a Salary Merit Increase. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor. As the council knows, you recently completed a evaluation of, Kevin completed the evaluation process, and as a result of that, decided to give the city manager a raise up to step five, and so this item would amend Kevin's existing employment agreement to do two things, increase his salary to $29,012.33, and change when his annual evaluations happen so that they're every July, or on or about July. Other than that, his agreement, employment agreement remains the same, none of his other benefits or things are changed. So with that, if the council has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So, a little bit more on this. When Kevin came in, we were pretty hard on him, and set him at a lower rate, and gave him a six-month evaluation period so that we had the ability to get rid of him if he didn't pull his weight. I'm being very honest, that's why it was set up, and, and he took on the challenge, and is leaps and bounds above anybody I've seen in this spot. He's saved hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more, into the millions for our city over the past six months, and we couldn't have had a better person, so this is well-deserved, well-deserved, so thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, appreciate that, it's really nice, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make any public comments? Bring it back to the dais for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to move this forward.
First and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes 5-0, thank you, and thank you, Kevin. Yeah, yeah, it is, it's well-deserved. All right, we'll move into New Business, H1. Consider the Award of Construction Contract to Terricon Constructors Incorporated for the Cloverdale Water Treatment Plant Well and Station Improvement Project, Wells 7 and 8.
This is the, the second half of our Wells 7 and 8 improvement projects. Phase 1, you've already seen, that went to Well Industries, Inc. For the well drilling, this is all the topside mechanical, skate integration, building, well pumps, piping, all that stuff, so we put that on the new business calendar because we know that's a, a big water project, and you guys want to update, and just to see the numbers on these things, that we're, we're getting them done now, that way we don't have to continually chase this inflating dollar amount. So any, any, any questions on the bid? Numbers, anything?
Questions all open to the public, anyone have any questions on this item? I have zero questions on it as well.
We did include a 5% contingency, $86,284.60, so.
Perfect.
Hopefully that'll float any additional things we run into.
Like to move to accept the bid from Terricon Construction Incorporated for Wells 7 and 8?
Second.
Motion and second, do we have a, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0, thank you.
Awesome. I'll just stay up here.
Yep, just stay right there. H2, Consider Authorization to Amend the Agreement with West Joe's Associates to Provide City Engineer Services Through December 31st, 2025.
So, we have a consulting city engineer, Vanessa, she's been with us for a few years. This is her, her, her agreement, we redo every six months. She does come from West Joe's, so it gives us access to a whole team of engineers, and this is her, her continued on-call for us, and that, that budget amount is not to exceed $175,000, but it is noted that with, with her direction, West Joe's has brought in $5,750,000 in grant funding since 2021. We completed last year's fiscal budget, under budget by $227,000, and this number will come due every six months, that way we can properly direct West Joe's into the more needed projects, and we can, we can track that better, but this, this number you've already seen. But this, this number you've already seen, the 560,000 committed to West Joe's Engineering Services in the 25, 26 fiscal year budget. So you guys saw that in the two-year budget. So it's not, it's, it's not that it's an unbudgeted addition. It's every six months, we redo the contract, reassess where the services are needed the most, what projects are getting worked on, and, and we can retool the, the scope and contract from there.
Thank you, very well explained. Let's go for questions.
Just a comment. Thank you, Vanessa and Derek. You do a great job at engineering and keeping our city, the water flowing, and Derek's keeping everything on course. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution. Oh, okay.
No, I want to say thank you. We do this so we can watch the budget because it's tight, and you guys have been under. This is the second time, so we're, we're excited and we think, we're appreciative. Anyone else in the public have any comments? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale authorizing an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with West Joe's Associates to continue providing city engineer services through December 31st, 2025.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Are we good? We're good. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek, appreciate it. Thank you, Vanessa, for, and thanks, thanks for being here. All right, we'll move into I, the Potter Valley Project. The standing item for assigned council members to provide reports on the Potter Valley Project Citizens Advisory Committee for the City Council and public to receive updates and engage in ongoing discussion regarding the Potter Valley Project. What do you have, anything? All right, the city has been in meetings with Sonoma Water and a high-level state official. They've been discussing the application that was submitted by PG&E and what it means to Cloverdale. We asked them to define the word final, as they call it, the final decommissioning, as well as the word adequate when it comes to the water supply for Cloverdale's community. After the discussions, it was shown that the current decommission plan does not provide adequate water for Cloverdale. The state is going to be writing a letter that will be signed by them, the county, Sonoma Water, and the city, and it documents the shortfalls and the willingness to work as partners, to share the same message, whether it's positive or negative, and the decommissioning, of the decommissioning and the two-basin solution. Cloverdale is going to prioritize our water project list, and the state and county are going to work in collaboration with us to make sure that we have the funding necessary to be water secure in Cloverdale's community. We will continue to work to guarantee that we have sufficient water for fire safety as well. I want to say thank you to Supervisor Gore and Sonoma Water for following through on the $50,000 for the geological engineering, for deeper wells that we're hoping to find. And I look forward to the next step with our water purchase agreements and the funding that we've agreed to. Cloverdale appreciates your commitment to find ways to make us water safe for our future. Your council and city staff will not stop fighting for the community, and we'll do everything in our power to make sure that you not only survive, but you'll have the ability to thrive here. So that's where we're at. The last thing, PG&E held a town hall, I believe that was Monday night, and it was nice to hear some more truths instead of some of the other things they've said in the past when they said now, they came out and they said the dams are seismically safe. But their, their application is still moving forward, they can't stop it at this point, and it is because of a financial decision based on how it affects their investors, not upon, not based on seismic conditions of the dams. I'll leave it at that for now, but just know that we have a lot going on and is doing very well for Cloverdale. Would you like to add a comment?
I just wanted to thank the mayor and the vice mayor and the city manager and Alex Mog, our city attorney, for all the work they've done on this project. And I know it's been difficult and it's like overwhelming at times, but through thick and thin, they keep moving forward even with people throwing invalidation at them. And I just want to thank them for all their hard work.
You know, I would like to jump on that comment too, exactly, the, the hard work that the Todd you're putting in, Vice Mayor you're putting in, Kevin, Alex, everybody who's on board with this, move this forward to break out the untruths, get to the bottom of, of our, of the water. We, you know, water is the issue, everything else is just minutia. So water is the issue, and I, and I appreciate you guys moving forward and pushing forward for Cloverdale. Thank you for your time.
What's been nice is we have other people in this committee that we're working with that are helping immensely. Former PUC attorneys, former people that worked in high-level government, that have connections, they have the knowledge, and it really aids us as we move along to make sure that, that we are doing the right thing, that we are right. And, you know, and this is what Vice Mayor and I always ask whoever it is, whether it's the state, county, everybody, we ask them, if we're wrong, please show us so that we can stop, or we can, you know, only give facts. And we make sure that everything that we use comes from them, it's their information. So it's just twisting the words. For instance, PG&E talks about how this is better for their customers and how this is the right thing and it's cheaper for their customers and, but who's their customer? Their customer's their investor. We are the rate payer. There's a difference. It's semantics. And so when they talk about customers, it makes you feel good like you're going to get a better deal, but it's not you. You're getting the short end of the stick. The investors are the ones that are saving. So it's, it's always about the words, and so you ask why, you look at the wording and you see what's going on. And use the facts. They show us the spreadsheets, they show us the numbers, and we just say, okay, why this? And then here we are. So, you want to say something?
Thank you for the update, Mayor. And congratulations on getting the $50,000 move forward. One thing I'll just add with the PG&E, the comment period will be opening up at some point soon. So if we can get our letters in during that time and the public, those will be on the official record for staff to read. They will consider all comments filed during the comment period before finalizing their analysis and providing recommendations for the commission to consider and vote on. And part of, wanted to mention that I did write a note to Don Seymour from Sonoma Water, and this was regarding the second evacuation, which would be the pipeline for Lake Sonoma, and just kind of asking them to consider the outlet to meet the Russian River north of Cloverdale. I think there's a possibility that in 50 or 60 years, if the diversions do cease, that people are going to wish that if there is a pipeline that goes south of our city and it's pumped up, maybe we would have rather had it come in north of our city so that this way there's still water in the river. This is way down the road, but I think at this point, when they're in the conceptual phase, I think it's one of those things that, you know, down the road, want to make sure that this is in part of their plans. And then just want to give a update on the Russian River Property Owners Association. They did host a second of their Water Talk Series at the Cloverdale Vets Hall, August 4th, with Speaker Philip A. Williams. He's attorney with the City of Ukiah, he's done extensive work on the raising of Coyote Dam at Lake Mendocino. And I think one of the key takeaways that he mentioned as it sits now, Coyote Dam will need to be raised to fill our water needs, and I think that reflects what you had mentioned before, that as, as current things are, you know, we, we need more things to be in place for us to be resilient. And also, the Russian River Property Owners had their board meeting earlier today, and just want to report that they are at 47.3% of their needed, 51% of their acreage to file a petition with Lafco to create their proposed Alexander Valley Water District. And they have about three weeks left, and they need about 950 acres at this point. And that's what I got. Thank you.
That, that was actually good. I, that's something that I was questioning, and I didn't know where they were in the process, so it's good to know where they're at.
It's down to the wire, so they're, they're all pushing.
One of the things, the pipeline, that's, that's, yeah, we, we discussed that. They think that they can feed it with gravity instead of with pumps, with, so that's what the engineering, they're going to figure out.
It's kind of, oh, sorry. You know, it's just kind of one of those things, it's like, I think I was so happy to hear that there was possibility of a pipeline, that it was like that alone, just, and then when I stopped to think about it, I'm kind of like, you know, if this went north of our town, you know, in 60 years, it could be one of those situations that like, we can't change it then, but maybe now that they're in the conceptual stage, we can all push for, you know, that difference. I'm sure it would probably be not as easy, but I think in the long run, it would be better for us all.
And then, one thing I, one thing I didn't mention was, the committee is discussing and looking to do a motion to intervene. So that's something with, when the, when FERC opens up their period, that is something that we will do so that we can work through it. I know Alex and another one of our assistants is, is working together to make that happen.
Yep, we need time.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments on that? Any questions on what we discussed? Awesome.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just as a point, there was some discussion offline of potentially pulling this item from future agendas. Is that something the council is still considering, or would we like to keep it on as a standing item?
I think at this point, we, we could pull it off of the agenda.
Yeah, we, we looked at it, and since it was a decision of the council.
So let me do that under future agenda items, if you don't mind, and then see how people feel about it, and we'll get a, go from there. Is that okay with you? Okay. All right, so legislative reports, letters of support and opposition. We did do a letter of support for wildfire prevention grant. It was asked for by the chiefs. Is there any questions or comments from anyone? Awesome. Council member reports.
So I do very happy to report that working with Zero Waste Sonoma and the Reuse Alliance, we do have a date set for the Cloverdale Repair Fair. This will be at the Cloverdale Library on March 7th, 2026, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Do you want to thank Amanda Cronkright at the Cloverdale Library, Sloan Pagal, Zero Waste Sonoma, and Phoebe Schenker at the Reuse Alliance? Also reporting, there was a creation of a Cloverdale Leadership Committee. They had their first meeting Monday, August 11th, and there was about 20 attendees there, and this was a meeting to kind of make sure that, you know, all the leaders in Cloverdale are networking, talking to each other, keeping communication open, and finding ways to cooperate and sort of enhance our community. And this morning, attended Los Cien's Charla with Speakers Congressman Mike Thompson and Jared Huffman. This was a gathering of community leaders from across Sonoma County, discuss such topics as healthcare funding cuts and the threats to our community members from potential ICE raids, and how those threats endanger the well-being of our students, reducing their attendance, which impairs school funding. That's a detriment to all of our students.
I attended my very first ag and open space advisory regional meeting. It was held at Marquess Creek Regional Park. We had a short meeting, covered the history of different things they did to obtain the park and things that they're doing to put the park together. We went for a nice hike after our meeting, and members of the board expressed that they would like to come up to Cloverdale and have a future meeting up in Cloverdale and go hiking on our open space. I attended the Calpine Geyser Tour, which was very informative, and I suggest that anyone that's never been on that tour, it's free and it's something worth signing up for. The Public Works Director also attended that tour. It was very informative, and yesterday I attended a Police and Finance Subcommittee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I attended my Sonoma Clean Power, and I just want to point out to the community that if the, the residents or business owners here in town need to get a different look on their rate plan, Sonoma Clean Power is really helpful in that regard. So if you, if you know somebody that's, might be faltering on that, come see me and I'll set you in the right direction. Thank you.
All right, so I had, I attended a few things here. I'll, I'll make it quick. I was also part of the Admin Subcommittee. During that, we talked about the cannabis tax rates. With those cannabis tax rates, they've kind of been all over the board, and permitting has been, you know, a once-a-year type of payment, and it's always difficult for the businesses. So Susie came up with a great idea, the numbers worked out to make sure that it covered our costs, and all of the businesses involved with cannabis were very accepting of this new tax rate that would basically set it at a flat rate, and you pay your, your permitting throughout the year, and everything's involved, makes it really easy to do and easier to swallow instead of having the big hit at the end, at the beginning of every year. I know Daniel and others were very excited about it, I could say, right? And he even came and said so at the meeting, which was great, to get their approval before so that we're all working together and collaborating. Measure DD, I thought he was asleep for a second there. Measure DD, we got a tax update. It, it looked really bad on the numbers, but it's because most people pay quarterly, they don't pay monthly, and so we haven't seen the true effects of what the money will, that will be coming in from the three-quarters cent sales tax. We also did an EOC training with all of city staff, police and fire, a couple of weeks ago. I didn't, we haven't discussed it since then, it was a great training to basically be prepared for if and when an emergency happens. We can be set up and rolling in our EOC in about 20 minutes with our staff, and it was a great training to do because we walked in, some of these boxes had paperwork from like 1997, they had grandma's phone in the box with the rotary dial, and, you know, it was just really out of date. And so it was a good thing for us to, to get ourselves prepared and be ready to go. We discussed a lot of personal, or personnel updates with the police and admin. The city's in good hands right now. The police chief brought us a couple new ideas for reclassifications that we will be looking into, and it'll be brought here to the council in the near future. I also got to take part and speak at an, a program called the Mission One Honor Flight Program. I don't know if anybody here has heard of that. The Mission One Honor Flight Program is basically created for our military, military veterans serving wars that have never had the true closure that they need. And they have a program that will select different veterans, fly them and a guest to Washington, D.C., to visit all the monuments, visit all the grave sites, and, and give them the ability to see it, hear it, feel it, and try to find some type of closure. They do this out of Santa Rosa, they've done one flight, and I, I got to take part in the luncheon that was, actually Jean called it dinner, but it was 2:30, so I guess it depends on your age of what it is. At, at 2:30, it was great. But anyways, what's so nice about it is hearing the stories from these veterans that they're talking 55, 60 years, that they didn't feel they're at home, they've, they're embarrassed, they wouldn't talk about, they didn't feel like they deserved anything award-wise or certificate-wise, and to have them come up there and say that this brought them closure with the people that passed that weren't here, the people that spit on them, all the issues that they had because of this, the PTSD over the past 60 years. I mean, these guys, it, it's real, and they've lived it, and they do it for us. And to see them finally feel like they belong somewhere, or that they're okay with what happened in their wars was extremely touching. There's no other words, it was, it was moving, it was very moving. And so this program, if anybody wants to be part of something, this is something I recommend to everyone. It's, it's amazing what it does for our veterans. When they came home last time, they lined people to celebrate them from Santa Rosa Airport all the way to 101 on both sides of the road. The next one is coming up in October, I believe it's the 15th. I would recommend everyone, I'll, I'll make sure it gets on our websites and everywhere else, and it's spread on social media and in our newsletters, but I want to make sure everybody that, that we can get out there will be out there. I'm trying to get a couple different nonprofits that I know of to start helping and funding and doing things with them. But you want a touching thing, you, you go to that, you know, you see the Tunnel to Towers commercials, this is right there, hand in hand with it, and I was really impressed and thankful for these people. That's all I have on that, let me go back to the other agenda now. I have on that. Let me go back to the other agenda now. City Manager Report.
Just super quick, the Soda Springs Sequo document is done. It's out for review. It has to have a 30-day review period, so we're planning to bring that to the council September 27th, or just in that comment period right now. That's all.
That's awesome. Thank you. City Attorney? Okay. Council Direction on Future Agenda Items.
I just want to make a comment. I wanted to congratulate our city manager on his new agreement in salary increases, and thank him for doing such a wonderful job. We appreciate you.
As for future agenda items, I'd like to get direction on the Potter Valley Project. I think at this point, we could remove it off of this and have it as, basically under Council Member Report for the committee, or a committee report when it's necessary. Something along those lines, if, if we had direction from anyone.
I, I support that idea.
I, I do like the ability to discuss and share things with the council. I think if we don't have it on our agenda, otherwise, you know, I do not have that opportunity.
My take on this is, we have, we're bringing as much as we can in, in some of the meetings, and I understand that there's, but I think a lot of the progress that we've made right now is, it's developing, and, and we just keep, we're kind of repeating ourselves on this. And I'd like to see, I wouldn't mind taking it off, and as needed, we can bring it up because we're, we're making progress on some of these big meetings. And that's going to give out the true information right there. Boom. And I think I would be in support of pulling it and then just doing updates as needed, which may very well be weak, you know, as, as meetings go down. But take it off as a standing item and then report as needed.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, with their support with that, Alex, does it need to go to a future agenda item for that decision?
No, no, that's fine. We can take it off.
It was only on here by a direction.
Yeah, and, and you know.
Well, looks like we have four. So, any, anything that we want to bring up, we can do it through the city manager or, or through a, when it's necessary, through our committee. Okay. Anything else? Any other future agenda items? Anything that's good for the order? Seeing none, meeting adjourned, 6:52. Thank you all for being here. Drive safe tonight.